...perspective as it relates to their funding, what they requested this year, and what my recommendation is at this point in time. The one that is not resolved, and we have sent this just out today to the fire departments. So sometimes we do have them come back and ask for some additional information, and that may occur before final budget is presented to you all. The one department that I have not been able to resolve, and I put it in an email that I sent out to you all late today, is Waxaw Volunteer Fire Department. We are still getting some clarification from them on what their specifics as to their actual request, and once we get that information, I'll be able to give you a recommendation. So what you see on Waxaw is their full request, no amendments made by their manager at this point in time. The second part of your special meeting today is going to be your capital funding strategy. On March 26, the board went through a process in which you prioritize capital projects. So we've taken that information, and we have come up with some strategies as to how we can fund those capital projects in the future. Part of the board's direction was, what we've done in the past is really what we have available on fund balance, and we figure out what projects we can fund. We actually have put together a proposal for y'all's consideration as to funding capital projects in the future through a dedicated use of different funds and different methodologies. And that will be the second half of your presentation today. So if there are no questions of me, I will turn it over to Curtis to you. And there's also Brian Edwards here today. If you all have any additional questions as it relates to the EMS budget.
Thank you. Chair Commissioners, we welcome the opportunity to talk to you today about emergency services. We're going to be very mindful of your time and try to stay on time. We have a number of things that we'll talk about, and from time to time, I'll also refer over to division directors that are in emergency services, and we'll let them add a little bit of additional information as we go through. So what we're going to be covering today is 911 Emergency Communications Division, some of the things that we are involved in, and also some things that we see coming down the road. Same for Emergency Management Division, Fire Marshal's Division. We're going to talk about the budget for the EMS system, which is contract, and then the fire departments. Wherever we talk about 911 communications, Union County is somewhat unique in that we have one centralized P-TH for the county, Public Safety Answering Point. So we are the only communication center for the county, and we take care of all of our EMS within the county, and we have four squads of telecommunicators that consist of 11 personnel staff for each one. The other thing that we keep up with is infrastructure, I cannot talk tonight. We operate four county-owned communication towers. We have three towers that we are co-located with other people for our 800 megahertz system, for a total of seven tower sites. We also maintain the equipment for the communication center as well as the backup center. Additionally, we take care of the Union County Public School Transportation System and their administrative sections of the Union County Public Schools, their system, which is also within three of our county-owned towers. Our radio shop maintains just under 2,400 public safety radios, and by that, we're talking about the 800 megahertz system. Additionally, we maintain 550 radios on the school system, radio. Some of the agencies that we serve directly, this list is what we serve directly, it is all the fire departments in the county, all law enforcement agencies in the county, school security, school administration, transportation, animal control for the county and the city of Monroe, as well as the city fire department here in Monroe. Additionally, we have some other users on the system for Union County, which is parks and recreation, and also transportation for the school, excuse me, not the schools, but for the county. We also maintain theirs as direct agency served. We also have interoperability with other partners, and these partners are predominantly out of county, different adjoining counties, fire departments, and law enforcement agencies. We have service with them. We also have service with medic in Mecklenburg County, as well as Cabarrus County. We also have SPCC. We have recently went through an agreement with SPCC that we will be developing their use of the radio system and supporting them, as well as public works for a lot of the municipalities within the area. We take care of their opportunity to communicate also. As you know, and we've talked about this before, it's always good to reinforce, we also have councils and committees that are made up of our radio partners and users. Starting down at the bottom of the page, we have Dispatch Review Committee, which means monthly, these are the end-users on the streets that can come back, and they have conversations with us about what's working, what's not working, so that we can drill down and try to improve the system, to try to take care of the best quality assurance possible. Additionally, each month, we have, at the top of the page, Radio Communications Council. That's something that was established by the commissioners many years ago, and we have membership on it that covers the spectrum of our users. They meet each month, and they talk about individual items and make recommendations for what we need with the 800 megahertz system, the public safety system. Whenever they make a recommendation, that recommendation goes back to the county manager, and depending on the recommendation, it can also come to the commissioners for further action. The third committee that we have is in the middle, the Dispatch Steering Committee. The Dispatch Steering Committee, quite simply, is a committee that's made up of leaders of the public safety organizations, and they set the tone for how our communications actually operates within the county. So in other words, if law enforcement has an individual issue that they need work on, we talk to them, and we take it to the Dispatch Steering Committee. They're able to come to agreement as far as how it should be handled. After that, it turns into policy. Emerging demands that we're seeing for emergency communications, and these are things that are either going on now or that are coming in the foreseeable future. We've already had a discussion about public safety radio system coverage. One note that I have to point out on that, for many years, the system here, as well as other systems, was established using a street-level communications coverage. In other words, the way that it was designed was for a user to be in a car or out of the car with a portable radio on their side, but not inside of a structure. So that's the way our system was built, that's the way everybody's system's built. Whenever we had the discussions earlier this year about communications, and we started hearing some complaints about coverage in certain areas, we took a step back, and we requested that our coverage maps be engineered to tell us where we had coverage inside of structures. And we chose, basically, a fairly dense residential structure, which is sort of the middle of the road. We came up with that so it would give us a little more indication if a law enforcement officer or a paramedic is inside a structure and they're trying to communicate. We want the signal penetration to go in, and we want them to be able to talk back out of the structure. If we have a firefighter inside the same type of structures in a fire event, it's even more critical because a lot of times, they are actually lower to the ground. They may be crawling, they may be laying in a structure. So it becomes a much more important tool going further. And you already know that we have talked a few weeks ago about adding two tower sites. That is part of that work. Additionally, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about microwave replacements also, so I'm not going to bore you with that at this point, because we've already talked about it. One thing that we are going to talk about is transition to sheriff's telecommunicator standards. This is something that we are doing in the communication center for our staff, and this is something to try to, if you would, raise the bar for the level of communicators that we have. So at this point, I'm going to give Vicki Calca, our communications director, a couple of minutes to talk about the sheriff's telecommunicator standards.
Thank you. Just a little bit of background, sheriff's standards has been around quite a while. It was implemented for telecommunicators in 1998 as a beta test, and at that time, it became mandated for sheriff's departments, but any municipality could chime in and become a part of that. And what we gained from that is free training. So our telecommunicators attend a free training session initially, and they are certified by the North Carolina Sheriff Standards Education and Training Commission. And then ongoing, we receive up to 24 hours of mandated in-service training each year. So as new things come about, things that we have not encountered in the past, they're kind of on the forefront of getting that training in front of us, to make us at least think about it. What do we do if? What would we do when? So that transition, I feel like will do a lot for us, and then number one, it costs us nothing. There's some paperwork, right? But that training is invaluable, especially that ongoing training, which is kind of why we decided to go in that direction.
I'll let you go ahead and address the shift supervisor.
The next item there is that we would like to remove the dispatch duties from the shift supervisors, and that's something we've been working on for a little bit. The idea is that every room needs a coach. You have a good quarterback, right? Someone to initially take over and reassign folks, or to take control of a situation, to make sure that we're notifying the chiefs and those that have a vested interest in what's going on. So with that, we'd like to think of our shift supervisors as being a backup to the dispatcher, but not necessarily in the weeks, if that makes sense. And that's all we're trying to accomplish there. They're free, they're available to help in any way possible, but we really want them to control that effort and make sure that we're covering everyone.
And that actually is the recommended way to operate, because they're really not looking for supervisors to be actively handling channels or anything like that. They need to be controlling the tempo of the room. I'll go ahead and take your staffing plan. We do have a staffing plan, and part of it reverts back to a study that was done by mission critical partners as part of a space study within the last year. And as a result of that, we've looked at a number of things. Currently, we have two main issues in the center that we want to address after the center is renovated. So after the center is renovated, we're looking to add an additional law enforcement dispatch position. The reason why is because, right now, we have a city of Monroe position, and then we have what is called a county law position. The county law dispatcher handles the sheriff's office and all the other municipalities within the county. We want to add a third law dispatcher to take part of the additional workload and spread it among the three dispatch positions for law. Currently also, we have a county fire dispatcher and a Monroe city fire dispatcher, but there is not a dedicated EMS dispatcher in the center. The EMS dispatch is predominantly handled by the Monroe fire dispatcher. However, with changes with EMS, as well as some other things that are coming along, we want to change that, and we want to have an EMS dispatcher, Monroe dispatcher for fire, and a county fire dispatcher. Now additionally, those three positions would be the primary call taker after the assigned call takers are busy. So they would have more to do than just dispatching the fire and EMS calls. They would be backup to the call takers.
And if I might, Curtis, those positions are approved in this year's budget. The reason we have not been able to go to this implementation is associated with we can't fit anymore bodies within the 911 center, hence the renovation that we talked about on the 26th.
End-to-life radios and replacement plan. Right now, and I know that we had this discussion last year also, we do have some radios that are coming to end-to-life. The manufacturer says they establish a date, and from that date, they give you X number of years, generally three, and at the end of three years, they say they will no longer supply parts. In other words, the manufacturer will no longer build parts for the radios. Currently, we have a number of different types of radios that we're using that falls in that category, which is the reason why you do see radio replacement plans coming through in the budget. Part of the other thing that we're able to do by replacing radios, though, we're able to take the radios that are approaching end-to-life, and as long as they can still work on the system, which many of those still can, we're able to have a fairly large number of radios that can be turned in that we can repurpose. And that way, if we have a radio that breaks and it's outside of the end-to-life, we don't really have to worry about it. Yes, sir.
In your budget for the radios, is that in your budget? Because I know in this, there's a lot of radio replacement requests as well. So is it compiled measures?
It's all, well, for the sheriff's office, it's done over, we're doing that over a three-year period of time.
They're affordable radios, a four-year process, and this coming up is a year or two.
And I don't know if it's in the central account, if it's Curtis' budget, but we have taken all the...
They're in the cap, the radio replacement for everyone, but the fire department has funded through capital.
Okay, the fire department.
The fire departments are funded through the fire department.
Okay. So, but we have, when we mapped it, all of the fire departments, we did, it provided with Curtis with a list of either additional needs or replacement radio needs, and so that's been considered as part of the...
Didn't know if you needed to add them together?
No, no, you're good.
All of them were included here.
They're included. Any other questions about radios? Okay. We also have the Fire Marshal's Division. We have a lot of things that they do that are required either by general statute or the fire code. And to give you a little bit more detailed information on this, I'm going to let Fire Marshal Kevin Regoli speak to these items.
So our office is currently tasked with fire inspections, fire code enforcement, fire investigations. Our three keys with fire inspections, North Carolina statute and North Carolina fire code mandates a certain inspection frequency based on the occupancy class. They're either a one-year, a two-year, or a three-year, based on the hazard. The most hazardous are once a year. Those would be places like nursing homes, hospitals, where you have the opportunity for a large life loss. Schools are the only inspections that we have that are kind of standalone because of a particular North Carolina statute, 115, that says we have to inspect each public and charter school twice a year, no further apart than 180 days, no closer than 120 days. So I think we're about 54 Union County schools in three charters. We've got two more charters coming online, so we basically have a 68 window twice a year to go out and do those school fire inspections. Right now, we're about 700 inspections behind from that mandated frequency. We're a little better than we were this time last year. Last year, we were just a little over 800. The ones that we're behind are those level threes, those low hazard occupancies, the small businesses, the mom-and-pop gas stations, things like that. With plan review, we also do building plan review. Construction in Union County over the last year and a half has blossomed and bloomed, and we do the construction review on all the buildings that are built in Union County, as well as the construction inspections during the process of the building itself, sprinkler systems, fire alarm systems, things like that. Fire investigations, not every fire in Union County is investigated by Fire Marshal's Office. If a fire department or a fire chief goes to a fire, and that fire chief decides we can make the call on the origin and cause of this fire, we leave that up to them to do so. But we do also respond during the daytime to assist with the fires, either through the investigations or fire suppression efforts. So far in Union County this year, we're almost at 50 structure fires. That is going to put us well over 100 for a year. Our typical year is about 100. There's 100 fires, we've had two civilian fire casualties as well, so two fire deaths in Union County so far this year. Our education programs, as mentioned up there, internal and external, the internal programs are things that we go out and we try to take care of a target that we see is causing fires, children with matches, space heaters, things like that. The external is when we go help our fire departments with the Fire Safety House or a program that they've got going, or through safe communities here in Union County. We're providing pump testing for some of the fire departments. Many of the fire departments now have contracted with private services to do that, and there's some that still want us to do that. So we do that annual pump testing that's required under ISO. Fit testing equipment for fire departments, we maintain that, that fit tester. The several of the fire departments use our fit testing equipment. The sheriff's office, Downing's Police, Monroe Police also use the fit tester, and the fit tester is what you test the respirators for, to make sure it's in compliance with OSHA standard. And incident assistance for fire law enforcement agencies, as I was saying before, if there's a fire, we go. If they don't need us to investigate, we help them mitigate. The sheriff's office has a search ongoing. We try to come in with them, help them establish incident command system, and do all the things that we can do that we don't need to be sworn officers to do, to try to help our partners.
Just a couple of comments before Kevin sits down, because I've got another section that he's going to add to. But wherever you look up here, one thing that is somewhat unusual, if you look at Union County as opposed to other counties that are within our population size, whenever you look at fire inspections, the only jurisdictions that do their own inspections in Union County is the city of Monroe and Waxaw. All the other areas of the county rehandle the fire inspections. Whenever it comes to school inspections, all public schools and charter schools in Union County are inspected by the county fire marshal's office regardless of where they are. So even if they're inside a municipality like Monroe, we still have that responsibility. For fire investigations, we handle fire investigations for all areas of the county with the exception of city of Monroe. So what I mean by, whenever you look at population close to us comparatively, most of those other county fire marshal's offices have large municipal fire departments somewhere within their boundary. If you look at Moncom County, they have Asheville, which takes that much of the footprint. If you look at New Hanover, they have Wilmington, which takes that much of the footprint. So our service model is a little different as a result of that. How does the county impact fire department ISO ratings? This is one section of an ISO report, and this particular one is for an inspection that occurred in Union County last year. So we pulled one, and we pulled it to show how the county actually can affect part of the credit that's available. If you look over on the far right-hand side, you see credit available for each one of these categories, emergency communications, water supply, and then we'll talk about community risk reduction. For emergency communications, there's 10 points available. The vast majority of this point credit goes back to the 911 center and the equipment. The reason, whenever this particular survey was conducted, the reason why we did not meet the 10 points, we had a couple of issues. One was the calls were not handled quite as quickly as they needed to be, and it's judged by an NFPA standard. So we were a little short on that one. The other problem, which is actually a fairly significant problem, is something very simple. The generator for the 911 center here is not automatically tested every week, and that's a point deduction. So we can work on the employees, and we can improve our time to handle the call, but the hardware's a little harder to take care of. So those are two things that affected us in that particular rating. Water supply, the department has a couple ways that they can take care of their water supply rating and number. One is they can do rural water, where they actually haul the water by tanker, and they dump water, and it's a very timed and a very demanding process. The other thing is, depending on the amount of their district that's covered by water systems, they can use the water system to take care of that. So in that particular case, the county, if they're in an area that has county water, can actually highly influence their rating for water supply. Did you have a comment on water supply? If you did or not.
No, sir.
Okay. For community risk reduction, this is an area where a lot of the credit for this particular section comes from the county. One comment on that, if you look down, credit for public fire safety education, the departments have a choice. They can either supply the numbers for their own program, or they can use the county's numbers. And the history so far has been, the inspector will use whichever one is most beneficial to the fire department. So we will provide theirs, or ours, and they can provide theirs. I'll let you talk for just a minute about part of the reason why the numbers look like they do.
Okay. So the community risk, as you can see, is the 5.50 up there. At the end of the ISO grade, that 5.50 is like extra credit on the test. That's worth half a grade as a standalone for a fire department. So that could be the difference between going from a class four to a class three. The fire prevention and code enforcement, the 1.55 out of 2.20, that just basically goes right in line with what we know on the number of inspections we're behind. The other issue there is people change occupancies within buildings sometimes as quickly as within, a couple of times within 90 days. There are fire departments that we've done grading with that have phenomenal pre-incident survey programs, where they actually take those paid people during the daytime, and they go out, and they talk to the business owners. They map the building, they know the utilities, routes of egress and access, and they're still not getting the full credit sometimes with what they're doing as well. The ISO requires that the code enforcement official have 24 hours of continuing education per year. North Carolina has tweaked that just a little. North Carolina requires six years of continuing education for each trade that you're certified to be an inspector in. So for the fire, it's six hours. If I were building code, that would be an additional six hours. If I were plumbing, that would be 18. But North Carolina doesn't deem us as a state because we're not meeting 24. They take the six and accept six to give us the full credit for the education. The credit for public fire safety education, they want to see what percentage of that fire district receives some type of focused fire prevention message. The ISO Field Operations Guide, and also North Carolina OSFM provides guidance on that. They want to see programs like smoke detector installs. They want to see juvenile fire center program. They want to see programs like, oh my goodness, I'm having a connection for a second, but there's a list of public safety programs that they will give credit for. Simply showing up with a fire truck and saying, hey, kids, and squirt water, while it's a good public relation tool, it doesn't meet the ISO requirements for public fire safety education. And then again, credit for fire investigation programs, remember I referenced that on the last slide. Union County Fire Marshal's Office does not investigate every fire that occurs in Union County. I would say that we probably investigate somewhere in the 90% range when it comes to structure fires, and then again, just a little less on vehicle fires. A lot of those may be the simple pot on the stove that the fire department responds to. You've got a burnt pot on the stove and a little bit of damage to the cabinets around, and on two o'clock... And on 2 o'clock in the morning on a Saturday, sometimes if our chief decides it's easier to do that investigation than to wait for my on-call staff to get up, get dressed, and get there. But we typically will have a conversation in the firing leak about that particular incident. They also require in ISO for each fire investigator to have 40 hours of continued education for fire investigations. So, while we scored pretty well here in Union County, we're changing ISO inspectors this year. Chet Hill, who's been our inspector for years and years and years, just retired, and with anything, a little bit of discretion can go either way. So, it'll be really interesting. We found out just this afternoon that Unionville's going to be looking to go through an inspection in November. So, it'll be good to see where we end up after that inspection based on what our historical data has shown us over the last three years. I think we've done seven ISO inspections in Union County.
Any questions about ISO?
I've got one for you. Do you test that generator each week?
It is manually tested.
So, they give you credit for it being manually tested? However, they do not give you full credit because anything that has human involved can cause the whole thing to fail. And that's not us, that's the way the ISO and NFPA looks at it. Okay. I'll let you go with your version.
Our version demands, just like it says there, keeping out the challenges of service demand for everything that we do. Since I don't think that the Fire Marshal's Office has seen any additional staffing since the early 2000s. So, like all of you sitting there, I've been here, we all know the growth. We're doing a good job with what we've got, but we're not meeting all the benchmarks that we need to be meeting despite our best efforts. We put a focus on fire investigations first because that affects families, that affects livelihoods, that affects business. Our next focus is on a plan review because we want to make sure that it goes ground up correctly. Because if we don't build it correctly now, it'll be a mess to manage throughout the rest of the career of the building. And then needless to say, our high hazard institutional and educational occupancies. What we would like to do in the future, if we can get some additional staffing, is divide the county up into zones and put inspectors, assistant fire marshals in zones, just to give us some economy on where we go. When we do our maintenance inspections now, we do our best to group them in areas so that we're not driving from Indian Trail and Marshall every day to do two inspections. But sometimes, construction inspections, foster cares, things like that pop up that we can't plan for. So, we may be in Indian Trail doing inspections all morning, and then a 1 o'clock foster care or a 1 o'clock construction inspection on the other side of the county. So, also with that, we want to develop subject matter experts in each of the target hazards we deal with. I did this in Monroe. I had a fellow that was exclusively committed to the schools. So, when the school system had a question, they called the one guy up, the one guy got the one answer. Institutional hospitals, nursing homes, somebody that knows the nuances of that code in and out. We're still working from a code from 2012 in North Carolina. They've made amendments to that code almost monthly, and we're up to probably 70 or 80 white paper pages now. And unless you know exactly where to look, you don't really know that that's come out because they don't notify us on the white papers. So, somebody who's a subject matter expert can be tasked with keeping up with that so that, number one, we're very competent, we're very effective, but number two, that we're very, very responsive to our customer service needs.
Next, we go to emergency management. A number of things listed for emergency management, and I'm going to call Don Moyer for just a minute to speak to those.
Good afternoon. So, we've got a comprehensive approach, if you will, relative to emergency management. So, we've got a few different plans. And the Emergency Operation Plan, or the EOP, is actually housed in the county clerk's office. And this is a plan that is a framework that specifically works regarding the placement, if you will, of information specifically regarding an incident or disaster. So, if we have a disaster, this is the Emergency Operation Plan that we use, and it uses the indexes specifically in the plan that tells us a framework of what to do. So, in this plan, we do not publish it. We tend to have it specifically in the county clerk's office. And for example, it may have an annex in there that speaks to terrorism, for example. So, for us specifically, we just decided that is not something that we want to put specifically out on a website itself. So, the Emergency Operation Plan, we work with this as our coordination, and this plan works in coordination, again, with other plans that we have specifically which we have as well. The Emergency Operations Center Activation and Coordination, this is specifically where we have a locations where all of our government agencies can interact together for coordination and communication. So, they can come to this one location centralized and determine how to make decisions regarding an emergency or disaster that may occur. So, the commissioners and the county manager and the executive director specifically, they may not be in this Emergency Operations Center, by the way, which is located on the third floor here in the government center. But you would be in a steering committee specifically where information that came from the Emergency Operations Center by way of the division directors and subject matter experts that may be in the Emergency Operations Center will make decisions or come up with some ideas, will give that recommendation to the executive director, and he brings it to you. Now, in a disaster, sometimes there are declarations, emergency declarations. So, the emergency declaration is done specifically by the chairperson for the commission by way of recommendation through the executive director, through the manager. So, we've talked about that a few different times, but that would be in your lane relative to a declaration specifically for the county, as well as the mayors would be responsible for their cities, but all that will come through the county commissioner and the steering committee specifically. Response to hazardous situations, that is something like a field response that emergency management does. If in fact a diesel fuel or truck turns over, emergency management goes out to the scene, and we are to ensure that anything over 20 gallons of diesel fuel or an extremely hazardous substance that is spilt on our roadways, that can get into our streams, it is emergency management's job to ensure that the environmental company comes out and does the cleanup specifically. We do that during the day for emergency management and in the evening, and on the weekends, that task is taken by the Fire Marshal's Office specifically for the field response. Coordination drills, tabletops exercises, this is something that we constantly are asked to do more of because that's how we're able to practice, okay, how many plans we have. At the end of the day, these plans have to be exercised. So, drills and tabletops and full-scale exercises are what we do. We did one a couple of years ago, had the executive directors, and we're working currently now with the division directors so that we can enhance our response specifically. Because here, we always remember that whatever starts local in an incident, it ends local. So, if it starts local and it ends local, so we, Union County, has to be prepared to assure that we can handle whatever happens specifically for us, in terms of disaster or emergency. Local Emergency Planning Committee, LEPC, meets quarterly. It is, again, authorized by CERA, which is the Superfund Amendments Reauthorization Act of 1986. Specifically, we have several members of disciplines in our Local Emergency Planning Committee, and our task is to ensure that the chemical facilities that are in Union County are abiding by the regulation. You hear what happens across the country. So, our task with this group is to bring those facilities, emergency chemical facilities, into our LEPC meetings, and they meet with the government officials. So, we've got an array of disciplines that are in the LEPC. And then we do hazard chemical exercises as well. So, this is what's happening with the LEPC. They meet quarterly, and this is a very active committee, one of the commissions, it's on that commission with us, committee with us. Radiological emergency preparedness, Catawba nuclear facility. Again, this is a Catawba facility is actually located in York County in South Carolina. Two other counties, Mecklenburg County as well as Gaston County, are also involved with this delivery here for the Catawba nuclear plant. And our task here in Union County is just to ensure that if we have to do an evacuation, that we work along with the school systems as well as the first responders in training, and just to ensure that we can be able to keep everyone safe specifically. So, the Union County Board of Education works a lot, public schools works a lot with us, and it provides us one of the schools, which is Marvin Middle School, strike that, High School. Domestic preparedness for region, Dipper Number Seven participation. This is a regional group, again, and we've got 10, strike that, we have eight different counties that are involved in this Dipper Seven organization with 10 different disciplines. So, the disciplines are rural fire, we will have municipal fire, we've got law and health and hospitals. So, all of them are involved. What do they do? Well, they decide, they get some grant funding, and they decide what kind of capabilities they're going to pass out around the region. So, us here in Union County, we've been able to capitalize on this. Sheriff's Office has worked along with us. We've got some cameras, remote cameras, that you can see incidents right on your laptops. Additionally, we've gotten some mobile silence, and we're working currently on some showers and restrooms specifically mobile that we could use. Tri-county Hazard Mitigation Plan, this again is a plan that works, again, on a comprehensive approach with the Emergency Operation Plan. And this plan is tri-county, and we work together with Anson, Cabarrus, and Stanley County, I'm sorry, Cabarrus and Stanley County and Union. So, we all work together, and this is a threat assessment that is done in each of our cities, in our county, and they determine exactly what it is that we want to try to mitigate on our hazardous mitigation plan for Union County. So, you had the train derail that happened in Middle Springs. As we go to Middle Springs, we talk to that, those elected officials and those city officials, and we find out what issues that they may have that we need to mitigate specifically for them. What is our top mitigation issue on a threat here in Union County? Well, we just had one last night. So, thunderstorms happen, that's our number one hazard. Flooding and tornadoes. So, when we talk about hazards that happened, we just had one yesterday, and we found ourselves moving around with some damage assessments in Indian Trail as well as Middle Springs. And this is today. So, we've got a couple of structures that were damaged in those towns as a result of our thunderstorms that we had that came through last night. So, Director?
Things that we see coming down the road, first and foremost is coordination of county-wide active shooter and active assailant guidelines. The biggest thing is to bring the partners to the table to talk about what do we currently have in place, what do we need to have in place to match what is coming out across the country and in North Carolina in particular. So, that will be bringing together law enforcement, fire, EMS, public health, public, private, and charter schools to come up with that direction. The next thing is development of a continuity of operations plan for county government. What happens if you have an earthquake? What happens if you have tornadoes come through, like came through Guilford County last night? What happens if part of your buildings are destroyed? Where do you go? How do you set up shop within a reasonable amount of time? And how do you take care of it for a period of time? So, that is something that we're getting ready to start looking at. Review of licensed care facility emergency plans, this is something that DHHS and emergency management at the state level have worked on, and that is something that the state wants reviewed by the local emergency management office. Monitoring emergency plans, the middles for Union County dams, we actually have over 100?
107 to be exact, and dams in Union County. And the high dams and intermediate dams are the ones that we have to have evacuation plans for. And they have to have some inundation maps that go along with those. And so, it's a pretty rigorous evacuation plan that is required by the state. Again, these are unfunded mandates that we actually have within Union County. So, a small community like Arrow Plantation here in the county, I think it's in Waxhaw. So, they've got a high-level dam, so they are required to have one of these evacuation plans with an inundation map that is, again, is very rigorous, and it requires an engineer to make those plans specifically for them. So, again, 107, we've got 21 high and 12 intermediate. The remaining of them are low dams, which do not require any evacuation maps.
We also coordinate disaster drills with county school system, and that, again, comes as direction from the state. Couple of years ago, we also did a little bit of restructuring, and in our restructuring, we established an administrative bureau. This is just for general information. We brought together the areas of our services that touch all the different divisions within emergency services. So, we took anything that dealt with budget, grants, training, coordination, IT, as applies for CAD and other functions in EM and emergency management. Statistical analysis, they can actually do statistical analysis inside our service area as well as for other departments and agencies in the county whenever they request. Administrative support is a position that was approved in last year's budget and has definitely paid benefits in keeping our fire inspectors out in the field instead of in the office having to enter reports. And then we also do liaison with public safety agencies. Emerging issues for emergency services as a whole, the emergency services complex has to be probably our biggest emerging issue after you look at the divisional issues that we've talked about. Currently, we operate and function with offices on three floors of the government center. We also have space at the farmer's market. We have storage space over there as well as a garage area. We also have items on Patton Avenue over at Fleet Services, and that includes an array of trailers that sit over there. Part of our problem with our response trailers being stored outside is they are sitting on a grass lot. So, whenever it rains and it stays wet under the trailers, it has the effect on the wood on the bottom side of the trailers, it causes damage. We also have problems with the sun baking what is in the trailers during the summer, freezing during the winter, so we wind up having to replace items that are within those trailers. Some of the trailers are more critical than others as far as being susceptible to the materials or the trailer itself being damaged. The other thing that we have is our county EOC is too small to operate in adequately. If anybody has ever been in there, whenever we set up for an EOC drill or even for a small activation, the room is very small. We're currently talking to Monroe about establishing a joint EOC operation where their resources and our resources can come together. But one of the biggest problems that we have with that is quite honestly just space. So, those are items that are within the emerging issue for us. Next, we'll move to emergency medical services. Handout book that was provided, you have a list of emergency medical services. The biggest comment about emergency medical services is their budget allowed for slight increases in costs, but within acceptable levels for the recommendation. We also, last year, and then again this year, are recommending the use of their fund balance to pay for three additional transport units and one administrative vehicle, as well as replacing some of their computers that they use out in the field for patient reports and things of that nature. Whereas that particular portion of the cost is not borne by the tax rate, it's actually within their fund balance.
And by being able to use their fund balance, we were able to keep the rate at its existing level.
Any questions on EMS? And we do have Brian in the room, if you have any questions. Next, we'll move- Next, we'll move to the fire departments. This also is in your book and you have this basic page and then you have more detail listed within the printout. Basically, whenever you look at this, it is listed by category. The first column is the adopted budget for the current year. The next column is their department request for the upcoming year. The next is the county manager's recommendation. So with that said, a number of these departments really did not have very much change with the exception of general operating cost. In other words, the costs were very small in nature. So what I'm going to attempt to do is point out some of those. Any of the departments where the county manager's recommendation was a recommendation less than the request, I'll point those out whenever we get past these particular departments if that's all right. So Allen's Crossroads, very negligible change in their budget request compared to the year before and they really had nothing significant changing in their budget. We'll come back to Baker's Fire Department. Beaver Lane Fire Department, there is some reduction there. The biggest change in Beaver Lane is they had requested a ladder truck for the upcoming year, an annual payment on it, and we deferred it until there's some discussion between Beaver Lane and Wingate about ladder service in that area. That's not saying either one doesn't need a ladder or anything of that nature, it's just to try to have a little bit of conversation before we step off. And also, we're waiting for a funding recommendation to be put in place for those type of costs. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. We'll come back to Fairview. Griffin Road, their budget was very simple in nature, very little additional request. $16,000 was their actual change. And they had some breathing apparatus that was changed out this year and they're doing a little bit of additional change out of PPE for the upcoming year. Hemby Bridge, their budget was rather stable. No change in recommendation for it. Jackson Fire Department, if you'll notice Jackson, you will see actually a reduction and the reduction is because of a change in their recommendation for part of their staffing. They feel like that they were able to pay personnel on call and also make a slight reduction in the amount of part-time firefighters and still be able to adequately handle the job. So theirs is a little different. With that said, they also are getting one piece of equipment this year that they've requested for a couple of years, which is the ATV to take care of Can Creek Park. That's in the recommendation. Plains Creek Fire Department was fairly stable. Their changes were just a couple of renovation items to the building, some protective clothing and some rescue tools. So theirs was, was pretty simple and their request was within the recommendation. New Salem Fire Department, you will see an increase on theirs. Part of their increase is to add an additional daytime firefighter. In addition, they also, they have a piece of apparatus that they are buying and they are in preliminary stages to build a new station to replace one of their stations. However, that particular station is on hold right now. Providence Fire Department does not exist. This is simply the Providence Fire District, which this $39,000 figure has been in the budget for a couple of years and this is supplemental to Wesley Chapel to service that particular area. Sandy Ridge Fire Department, you will see an actual reduction here and this is because of a change in the payment for a new tanker that they have received as well as some breathing apparatus that they want to purchase that are being paid for either through leftover funds from the SCBA purchase this year or it will go into the 2020 request. Mineral Springs Fire Department, if you look at it, they have a $1,000 reduction over their current budget this year. So their budget request is recommended. Stackroad Fire Department, they had a $16,000 increase requested and their $16,000 were for an update to their cascade system, which is basically large air bottles that they use at the fire station. There's like four of those that they use in tandem to refill the SCBA that they carry on their trucks. Their bottles are beyond date. So it includes that as well as some wireless issues that they have to actually pay for connectivities to where they can actually generate fire reports and things like that out of their station. From our understanding, it takes a lot to get service into an area that has no service and there are particular stations within an area where there aren't very many vendors. Stallings Fire Department, we'll talk about it in just a minute with the list that has recommendations and non-recommendations. Union Bowl Fire Department, their overall request is slightly lower than the year before. So their, their request moved ahead as a recommendation. Wesley Chapel Fire Department, we'll talk about in just a minute, there was a slight adjustment to them, but we'll list that in another slide. Wingate Fire Department, they had an increase, but part of their increase was associated to a new engine that is coming in as well as they are actually taking one of their old engines that they're replacing and they're going to take the chassis for that engine. They're going to lift off the fireworks body, they're going to have a new rescue body put on it. So it is a good use of funds. So it actually is within their budget request for next year. There's also a couple of manpower additions that I probably did not list that are particular to each department, but overall, this is the basic change to the departments. And then countywide services down here at the bottom, 662,000, 651, that is the radios that were requested by the fire departments in the county for the upcoming year. That's the equivalent cost of those radios. To look at the actual requests that were not funded in the recommendation, we look at Baker's. Baker's had a number of things that, that were on their list for what we will call expansion. They wanted to add one position 24/7 at a cost of $154,000. They also requested a 50 cent increase per hour for all their employees and being able to actually recruit people to work on holidays, they wanted to increase to a rate of one and a half times their normal rate for having people work on 10 holidays. Whenever that calculation was done, the end result was we did not recommend the one additional position, which was a reduction of 136,760. However, we did recommend the increase per hour for their employees as well as the time and a half for the 10 holidays because we understand other departments in some cases do the same. There's a lot of competition for the part-time firefighters within the county. So that's one thing that we are seeing. They also requested replacement of their SCBA at $140,000. In talking to them, they said that their current units that they have have two more years left on the bottle life, which means they have at least one and a half to two more years that they have, that they can still use those particular pieces of equipment before they have to be replaced. So that was deferred for right now. Beaver Lane, as we said, they requested a payment for a ladder truck, $85,000 was the annual payment and we delayed it pending discussion with the Wingate Fire Department because they're very close and they both have unique needs for ladder trucks. Fairview Fire Department, they requested to add two positions Monday through Friday daytime, total cost 87,600. Last year, they requested four. We gave them two positions last year. At this point, we recommended one position be added for the upcoming year and that again is looking at funding. Stallings Fire Department, they requested to add one position on a 24/7 basis. They supplied us with a figure of 165,250 for that. Additionally, they requested a new engine with a $600,000 cash payment as it was proposed in budget. On this particular item, we asked for a little bit more detailed information because they had other things besides just the salary included in the 165,000 and wherever they sent us the updated information. We did not recommend adding one additional position and that is a reduction of $120,000. The new engine, instead of paying cash, we took 600,000 out of their request and added $52,000, which gave them an annual truck payment to fund the truck in the same manner as majority of the departments in the county have recommended is their desire in past years. Wesley Chapel, they wanted to add one position 24/7 for a future station at a cost of 118,085. This particular position, we did not recommend and basically our comments on that was we were deferring that until the new station was operational. So these are the actual significant reductions that you will see in the recommendation versus what was requested. Additional, additionally to that, we have a number of stations that were requested for this year and all the stations, the recommendation was to hold off until the funding is resolved to try to move forward on the stations. Some of the stations are definitely in the replacement. There is no doubt whatsoever.
My understanding is that the, our chiefs got this information this afternoon?
They did. And we will probably hear from some of them and as we have in the past, you know, we listen to what their concerns are and they may provide us with additional information. Now with Waxaw, as I indicated earlier, they, we requested some information to understand what their actual request was. It was a fairly significant increase. I think it was eight positions they were asking for and so we are still working with them and trying to figure out what is, is reasonable with respect to their needs and their growth.
And their $4.5 million is kept.
Yes, sir.
Okay. There was a notation on theirs that said that sales taxes kept flat. What does that mean?
The sales tax for all the fire, for all the fire tax districts was kept flat to the 2018 number. Sales tax is a combination of the tax levy for each of the fire districts plus the county as a whole and the tax rates. So as the rates are changing, and you can see there's a number of rates that are recommended to change at this point as well as the county rates are changing, until we kind of isolate and figure out how those are changing, we're not real sure how the tax districts are going to be impacted by that. So to not harm them or help them in this process, what we did is we held them flat over last year's amount, to last year's amount. So right now, that's held flat. We haven't grown it pending some, pending the outcome is one of the things.
Eight savings could be a true up?
There's always a true up with the fire departments because in the tax districts, of course, that money collected only goes to the tax district. So in any year, when you go through the big book, what you'll see for all the tax districts with the exception of maybe Mineral Springs, they all have a little bit of fund balance usage and that then translates out of the bottom line that they use for capital reserve. So if it's, if it's up, which is the sales tax, we'll talk a little bit about that tonight. If it's more than currently what's in there, they'll get the benefit of that in the following year. If they, if they run short, we ensure that fund is made whole at the end of the year. So they're never shorted and they'll only benefit from any overage.
Well, it goes along with the same question with true up schools. If you get it the next year, but is it in addition to your budget or is it part of...
It is just, we treat them just like the schools.
Okay.
From that perspective, what we do is we use that money for one-time items. So when we work with the fire chiefs, particularly the tax districts, they use it for capital, one-time items. Chief Dady always puts his into a capital reserve and you would see in his budget, he's buying a truck of cash this year. So we work with them to ensure that that money every year goes into capital, not into operating costs. So no different than what we do with the schools.
Do you have any questions? One more.
Yes, sir.
Where's the sheet on your department?
I do not have the sheet on our department.
I mean, you know, you talked to him. I got the impression you wanted more head count, but I didn't hear how many.
They are asking for one assistant fire marshal, is my recollection.
We haven't got to the point, our convention information is back to us yet, so I could not compare a particular page for us. So right now, you've got one assistant fire marshal and the equivalent for that person.
No communication, sir?
No, because the renovations are not in.
What, what we're planning to do is on May 11th, we're coming to you with a, I guess a draft manager recommendation for the leads to the budget. At that point in time, we're looking for input from the board so that we can then finalize the budget and send it to you by the statutory deadline of June 1st. So at this point in time, I will tell you we're not balanced, which is one of the reasons you haven't seen numbers on most of the departments. We're about $3 million still out of balance. Do you want to take a quick word?
Sure.
Sure, we'll take it.
I've already introduced you.
Sorry. So we're going to talk about capital funding strategy. As you know, we, you met on March 26th, you ranked projects by service area. So today, we're going to talk about the prioritization of capital projects, the replacement of renewal projects, which weren't discussed that day, the working budget comparison. Then we're going to talk about an initial projection of fund balance looking into next year and then also how we would propose at this point to fund those projects and the approach we used and what that looks like, the model and plan. And then hopefully, at the end, you will give us some direction about the projects and even some tax rate discussion as part of this because with the operating budget as well as the capital funding, they're kind of intertwined together with the pay-go funding coming from the general fund and so forth. So with that, the 26th, March 26th prioritization, this is kind of how we leave it up. You listed items one through seven as being critical or essential at that time, so they didn't get dots, they just got listed. And then everything from eight through 14 was placed on the list. And all the projects on this list were where we see dots, at least one. There are a handful of projects that did receive zero dots or zero prioritization. That was the Jesse Helms Park Development Phase Three, the Emergency Services Complex, Courthouse Phase Two and Pictometry. So based on that discussion, also, we have a series of projects we call replacement and renewal. And these projects represent really ongoing maintenance projects within the general fund. And these have historically been in the general fund or in the general capital program. Community services replacement and renewal, it would typically be used for equipment, used for facility, renewed carpet, those kinds of things. General government facilities is used for the same thing, for the general government facilities for this building, boiler replacement, different things like that. New this year, items three, four and five, we're recommending at this point that we start an ongoing maintenance and renewal effort, particularly at the jail. When Cindy and I sat down with the sheriff, we went through his budget and went through his requests related to the jail, things like painting, door locks. Last year... Last year, it was part of the septic system replacement, kitchen tile, just things that, as facilities get old, have to be replaced. So we're recommending as an ongoing structure, one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars annually for that. SPCC IT replacement and renewal. When we sat down last year with our foreign this year, they consistently have an IT request every year. So what we're looking to do is ensure that every year, they have money to replace servers, desktop computers, and desktop computers are included in that amount, and just different switches and IT infrastructure at SPCC. And this is about what it's been over the last couple of years. It doesn't include any ongoing contractual costs. The ongoing contractual costs would be included in their budget recommendation, but this is related to equipment purchases. And the one thing I will note is when you have a replacement and renewal accounts as part of the CIP, the fund, any unused funds from the prior year carry to the project for the following year. So, if, for instance, if they know at SPCC that they have a year where they're going to have a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar replacement scheduled, they can underutilize the prior year and pick up that amount in the next year. So this allows them to be able to do some things in plan ahead versus trying to have that ebb and flow process. And then the same thing on replacement and renewal. Even beyond their bond projects, their GO projects, they have a number of security and safety requests, cameras, door alarms, interface devices, so forth. So, we're looking at that, our recommendation is to make that about one-hundred-thousand dollars a year. The note, you can see, their request this year was one-hundred-and-seven-nine-fourty-five, so here, one of their program, when we look at the recommended funding structure, is actually a one-oh-seven, but after that, we're recommending a level out to one-hundred. And really, what this allows is for these departments, the sheriff's office and SPCC allows them to have an ongoing plan, and really know what they're going to get that is more for their use of those renewal items, that they don't have to come through and have a large capital plan to be able to have that. This gives them an opportunity to plan ahead of that.
So you're saying, give them one-hundred-and-seven this year, and then next year, it'd be a hundred?
Right, and the way this would work, with SPCC particularly, they would have to ask reimbursement for that. So, when we set aside the one-oh-seven budgeted, if they don't use all the one-oh-seven, the remainder will carry to next year and be added to the one-hundred for next, or the one-hundred for next year. So, we're recommending one-hundred-and-seven in 19, but then after that, we smooth it out to one-hundred annually. And you'll see that in the plan at the end. But I wanted to bring these to your attention, because I think they were mentioned at passing, maybe on the 26th, but these, we consider these critical to operations. It's not a lot of money in relationship to the total budget, but it's essential for those areas that don't have large ongoing projects to be able to have a little bit of money to do maintenance or renewal projects around their facilities and so forth. So this helps, even in community services, they do a lot of different things with this every year, playground replacement, equipment, and that kind of stuff. Plus, it keeps us from having to drop in very little projects. So, the capital funding strategy, which we've been working on, is kind of first and foremost, we want to be sure we have a sustainable plan. We wanted to create an ongoing funding structure within the current tax rates. So, when we talk about the funding plan in just a moment, I'll show it to you. What we looked at doing was taking the allocation of annual debt savings. And what that means is, we established a baseline number for 2018, and we said, if debt is forty-three million dollars, and we're going to pay off, and next year's payment would be forty-one-point-five million, instead of taking that savings to general fund operations, which is what we've done historically, we wanted to take that million-and-a-half savings and move it into the capital fund as an ongoing funding source. So every year in the capital plan, what you see is redirected debt savings. So for the general fund operationally, it's like we fix that payment over time, so that the difference every year that we pay down going into the capital fund. Then also, and what Cindy and I often refer to as our one-and-one or one-and-one-half strategy, depending upon which way you decide, is the allocation of a penny for capital. In addition to that debt savings, we would recommend that you would take a penny of our tax rate from the general fund operating and move it over to the capital fund as ongoing funding structure. This is different than what we have done in the past, at least in the six years I've been here. This is different, because this creates an ongoing cash flow to the CIP versus waiting to see what you did in the fund balance and then determining what you do next. We want to maximize fund balance usage. We heard that loud and clear from you guys at the last meeting. So we have a large chunk of fund balance coming into the capital, as well as existing project balances. We know that we're going to save some, for instance, at the Human Services Building. There's other small projects that we can close that have some fund balance, so we have some of that built into our funding plan. We want to be sure we use all the voter-approved GO bonding authority. We want to minimize new debt to ensure it works within the current tax rates. I will tell you that there is a little bit of new debt recommended, mainly for the sheriff's office facility, because of such a large cost, there was not a way to do that with cash. So we're recommending funding a little less than half of that with a new debt issuance. However, we believe that that will fit within the 3.09 that you already have allocated to debt service, to GO debt service. So, we can do that without having to increase that tax rate. And then we want to minimize, I'm sorry, maximize the use of the county's cash position for cash flow planning, much like we do with the enterprise fund. We want to use our cash position as a county to ensure that as we go forward, we don't have to borrow, or we can do projects in a timely manner through management of our cash position, and that will become apparent in just a moment when I show you the plan. But it allows us to maximize what we do with our cash. So the funding strategy looks like this. That debt service savings number, so this is the amount of debt savings every year that we are projecting, and that would then freeze, essentially freeze, our debt payment in the general fund operating side and move that savings to the capital fund. We have our 2016 GO bonds, those are voter-approved, thus the remaining scheduled that. The asset forfeiture fund, and that's tied to Phase Two of the sheriff's firing range project. The committed penny, so that is the estimated value of one penny across, that's going to come from the general fund over to the capital fund. And I'll give you kind of an idea. If you take the debt savings and the committed penny, it's a little over a penny and a half redirected out of operations into capital. Nine-one-one funds, these are funds that would be available for those radio projects and the tower projects. Fund balance usage, we talked about a pretty heavy chunk of fund balance, so a little over five-and-a-half million dollars of fund balance usage is programmed at this time. A little bit of pay-go to kind of help in 2020. Interfund borrowing, this is just a cash flow plug to make the plan work. So what we would do is take advantage of county cash, move it around within our accounting system. This keeps us from having to do the short-term borrowing and having interest costs, but allows us to keep on track with our projects. Other debt funding, this would be your new debt that you would have to take out in 2020 to fund the sheriff's office facility. And that's about, like I said, it's a little under half of the project, and we believe we could fit that in in our current debt rate. And then, project balance is brought forward. Right now, we're projecting about three-and-a-half million coming from the Human Services Building. I know that's not where we are right now, but there's still some open-ended items related to that building that have not been completed, so we left some space within that project. So that number could probably climb up just a little bit, but we wanted to be conservative in our estimate at this point, and we talked about the funding strategy. So a couple of components of that. I believe last time, we had a little bit of discussion about what's available in fund balance for next year. So we looked at the general fund, fund balances, so I'll walk you through this calculation, and I apologize, it's a little convoluted. So, if you start with the 20, what essentially is the 2018 starting position, or the June 30, 2017 financial statements, assigned and unassigned, we had about thirteen-point-three million. We also have had in our committed general fund reserve, sixty-point-six million. So that starts your position at seventy-three, almost seventy-four million dollars for year 2018. We think we're going to end up using a little bit of fund balance this year, about one-point-three million, which is a lot less than planned. And I will point out, as the note indicates on line four, based on our projections, as we're going to talk about tonight, I wanted to be sure we had some room. We'll talk about balancing strategies in a couple of minutes. But, we added a five percent contingent number to our projected year-end, because what I didn't want to do was be aggressive in our projection and underestimate, or I'm sorry, overestimate our fund balance and end the budget having to be below our twenty percent level. So that's adjusted with a little bit of room in our projections for year-end, and there's a good reason for that, a little bit more, I'll take it in a few minutes. So the estimated general fund committed reserve, because we don't know what the general fund numbers are going to be for schools and those other areas, which are part of that calculation, this is all based on current tax rates. So, we believe that number, that sixty-point-six million will be sixty-four-point-four, about that, at June 30, 2018. So that leaves you uncommitted fund balance of about eight-point-two. Right now, we have planned usage in the capital program, if you remember back to that number right there, of about five-point-five. Usage for one-time and contingent items in our current working budget as of Friday is about nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. So that leaves us a total unassigned, unallocated, uncommitted, or what we refer to as a probable, of just at one-point-seven million. So that's relatively thin margin, and one of the things that we'll be recommending in the operating budget is to eliminate contingent items and fund contingent items out of fund balances as they come up. So, for instance, this year, you use contingency for legal services, fire departments, sheriff's department, and a couple of other things. If we have a runoff election, we have a budgeted contingency for runoff elections. So next year, that one-point-seven would be the area or the cushion you would have to cover anything that comes up in the year. Because, again, we don't want to use tax rate to cover contingent items, we're going to try to push those to fund balance. The nine forty-nine that's current in there right now as contingent is our contracts for economic development. When we started looking back over time, what we saw was that we were paying out probably about a third of our contracts on economic development, meaning that a third of those companies, give or take, are meeting their need, are meeting their requirements to get their grant funds. So what we said is if we haven't paid them in recent years, we're going to put that as a contingent item, and we'll fund the first year out of that fund balance number, and then the following year, if they are showing a history of being consistent in requiring that payment, we'd go ahead and start paying that then out of current revenue. But what we were finding was we were using tax rate revenue for items that weren't getting used, and those would go unused all year and then just fall to fund balance at the end of the year. So, this actually saved us right at about a million dollars on the operating side from current, our tax revenue in that case.
And I really don't think it's because they don't meet the requirements. What's happening is it's taking them longer to get their expansions, their new buildings completed than what was originally estimated when the contract was signed.
Right, I'm sorry, I probably said that a little backwards. We're not paying it out based on currently where they are. So, as we mentioned, as I mentioned earlier, we kind of have this allocation of a penny for capital and annual debt savings that had an impact when we started talking about operating budget. So, this is kind of your first snapshot of where the operating budget is right now. And I'll draw your attention to option A and option B. You can see across the top, we have our general government tax rate. It's crept down from twenty-eight-eighty-two to twenty-six-eighty-four in 18, and depending upon kind of direction, your initial direction was a penny and a half, so that'd take you to twenty-five-point-three-four, and we have an option B, which is only a penny at twenty-five-eight-four. The big difference then would be in the property tax numbers. They have alarm taxes, as you can see, with a little higher rate, it creeps up about one-point-three million, give or take. The difference being in this number down here at the bottom, all else being equal, the difference is that one-and-a-half pennies were just over three million dollars out of balance today, and that includes the capital funding. If you were to add fund balance plus ongoing pay-go to capital, we're investing a little over nine-and-a-half million dollars into the capital plan. So, if you go with a penny, or if we were to go with a penny versus a penny and a half, we'd be at a million seven. And there are several ways to close that gap, but at this point, we've used a lot of those strategies, pushed out, like I said, the contingent items and so forth. So we're at the point now where it's going to be cutting into services and requests and expansions. And a large chunk of those expansions this year are, for instance, in public safety. When we get to the, when we get to the date in May, when we're going to present the manager's budget, I believe you said the 11th, what we will see is there's SROs and those kinds of things that are expanding in the sheriff's department that are driving part of the cost, plus we have some of those increased costs we talked about last time on the budget, including health insurance and so forth. So, as we sit today, like I said, at the penny and a half, we're about three million out of balance. At a penny reduction, we're about one-point-seven. So with the capital program, one of the ways also to close that gap is to release your capital program or to change your capital program and timing. Here's what is recommended and the timing of what is recommended. You can see all the items that, I believe down here at seven, were listed as critical. The 4-H Pavilion, Phases One and Two, the Sheriff's Office Facility, build out over the next three years, the Camp Store. The slides you have, your presentations are a little different. This is what I was trying to fix and correct, and so the slide you have is correct in your packet, so ignore line 11 in this case, the SOT projects. The Public Safety Training Facility Phase Two, which is the firing range Part Two, the Can Creek Buck House, pushed out here to 2022, the Recreation Center in 19, the Board of Elections renovations in 23, 24, the SPCC Western Union Classroom, that was a bond project, this is the second piece of that funding. The Community Services Replacement and Renewal, these, again, these projects right here are those replacement and renewal. The SPCC Building Renovations of A and V, those are bond projects, and then the two SPCC maintenance and renewal accounts that are shown. So I know I kind of ran through that fast in the interest of time, because I wanted to give you guys at least a few minutes to give us some direction. So what I'm asking today is, any change in direction on the tax rate and direction on the funding and funding strategy for the capital? So with that, I'll turn it to you for questions.
Mr. President? Jeff, I went by the Board of Elections today to see what was going on in their current I think there's some things from the state that are coming down that I've been made aware of, that we may need to try to ramp that up earlier. And when we're talking about renovations, at one-point-seven...
I think it was one-point-seven million, because they were proposing, I think, to cut the facility...
In two years, it's a little over one-point...
Build it back out again.
Right. One-point-seven-six.
One of the things I looked at, and we're discussing over there, is having a facility, there's some property we have near, adjoining that, or right there at that property, maybe doing something there. So I think maybe we need to talk about that a little bit before we make any final decisions, and we probably need to be talking about some of that in closed session, I would think. But I'm thinking that's going to be moved up, from what I saw today, the information I was given today. So, maybe we can look at that, talk about that later.
I, well, I'll look to Mr. Crook. I don't know that it qualifies for closed session. I'm not aware of any statutory requirements, is it?
If there's some property nearby that we may have to purchase in order to facilitate that, or do we have enough property on that site to do something?
I think we're pretty constrained, I would say.
What I looked at is, I don't see how they could expand that to make what they needed to do be done.
No, I don't.
There's no loading dock.
I'm not aware that we've got excess property at that site.
There's no loading dock there, there's a lot of other issues there with the facility, and it's a nice facility for Board of Elections, I just think there's an issue with room. And there's also an issue with off-site storage. I think some legal and logistical issues of off-site storage that they're concerned about, and maybe we need to hear those out a little bit better as a board.
There may be some logistical issues with off-site storage, but we've looked into it preliminarily. We're not aware of any legal restrictions with off-site storage, because that's what many elections department have to do with their voting machines, et cetera, because taking up office space for that type of use may not be the highest and best use for unsecured voting cases.
Like for this year, there could be three elections, and going through and testing those machines, going through and charging them...
those machines, going through and charging, recharging the batteries on those machines, all the things that need to be done. You know, when I heard, I thought maybe the off-site storage would be completely fine, but I don't think after talking to them today, that fits what they actually have to do. And you know, when we're talking about three, possibly two elections a year, three elections in a year, and then an election every year, along with training of staff and training of people to go out and work on the machines, I think there's just maybe a little bit more to that we're taking into account. Also, the $10 million that we're going to have to borrow, you said that we could use that for, and probably pay for it with the 3.09 cent? Or is that something that we would go to the voters for a new bond?
There's a couple of, at this point, we haven't kind of specified the type of debt that would be. We certainly have various debt tools at our disposal. A couple of things have happened since we did that original 3.09 estimate. Our penny values are growing faster than we anticipated. In addition, we're issuing debt at a lower rate, at least the first tranche. Now, we haven't issued the second tranche yet, and the market is changing now on a day-to-day basis. So we do believe, however, the $10 million, debt service and the $10 million will be about $800,000 over the life. So we think that we could fit that in. There's a lot of discussion about public safety facilities and GEO bond elections and those kinds of things around the state. So we would certainly have more discussion as we would get to 2020 and get to that. Have to make some decisions about what to do with that. But right now, we plugged it in.
One concern that I've heard from folks in the agricultural community was that, you know, maybe wanting to build it soon, you know, maybe you wanted to build the 11, 12 million, whatever they were estimating, and build everything together. So maybe we could potentially think about a bond to go to that rather than just use our money toward the sheriff's department instead.
Which projects are you referring to?
The sheriff's department, the, as you said, we're going to use that 10 million for the sheriff's.
Right, 10 million is a portion of that $20 million funding right here.
Right.
Because you really only want to use the bonds on a project that's going to be more of a facility, a building.
Isn't that what the pavilion is?
Right, well, are you talking about bumping up, maybe swapping the sources and moving, issuing additional debt?
Maybe possibly moving that up. Or if we had to go through it, if we're using that to, whether we use it to pay for one or the other, I guess it doesn't matter, so if we can use that 3.09 cents to pay for the pavilion or pay for the sheriff's department renovations.
It depends on the tools you use and the type of debt. So if, for instance, if we use a limited obligation bond, or if we use a, some term, some form of secured debt on that facility, a project essential, essentiality discussion will come into play. Public safety facilities traditionally are easier to finance than other facilities, if you will.
So what if we did a voter bond on that, that 12 million, that go ahead and do the whole thing at one time?
You, as a board, could absolutely have a bond election. Your next opportunity will be in November this year or in 2020. I think we probably have a little hard pressed to get it together for November. I haven't sat down in the calendar, so I think you may be hard pressed for this November, but...
I think November would be...
I had to speak with our board, because I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head.
I concur with Commissioner Rushen. About six months ago, I visited the Board of Elections and also got the same message and saw the same concerns. Probably one of the things that concerns me as much as anything is that when the Board of Elections asked for space to do their training for this upcoming election, they were turned away at the Ag Center, they were turned away at DHS. And so if we're going to do, that's what happened.
We accommodated them at the Agricultural Center. We offered them space in human services. We offered them many options for their training.
Where are they training now? Where are they training?
I couldn't speak to where they're training, but I know that we had some dates for them in the Fall, I believe, for some training at the Ag Center.
The other piece I have some concern on is that we ranked these by category, but we didn't rank them overall. And as a matter of fact, some of the categories got less docs than others. So it made it difficult to have a lot of comparison. I'd like to see if you talk, if you talk, everything's going to be done with just a $10,000 bond?
10 million.
10, I'm sorry, 10 million. I'd like to see it laid out with the cost of which one. This is a little confusing for what you're telling me to do.
The only debt that is in this funding plan is attached to the sheriff's office facility. The rest of the sources are general in nature, except for the radio funding, which is tied to the radio projects, and the asset forfeiture funding, which is required to be used for training and that kind of stuff with the sheriff's department, is tied to the firing range. The remainder of that funding then is just general in nature and allocated across the projects. So that, you know, we didn't do that this way, because it's a little more confusing, but because those are the only tied funding sources, if you will, in the program.
When you look at the prioritization that the board did, I mean, you've got the library, which has already gone through a GEO referendum. The library, RFID, was phase two of a project that originally was funded at home last year, and as part of the reductions we were asked to make, we said we would do it over a two-year period. Down to item seven, we're all deemed critical because they were the public safety in nature or on the historic courthouse preserving the integrity of that particular building. And then the 4-H Pavilion, the sheriff's office facility, and the Can Creek cap store, which is a fairly insignificant item financially, those were considered, you know, essential as well as the public safety training facility phase two, which is the firing range. After that, as you can see, the prioritization that was done by the board dropped off significantly. So we did our funding plan, it was in keeping in mind with what the board communicated they thought was critical and essential.
And the reason why the recreation center is moved up where the others are moved out, those, the twos and ones down at the bottom of that list, is this is the store equipment, which they currently have, and some that's going to be recommended in the budget. So this was, in staff's opinion, needed to be moved up to be able to accommodate the storage of that equipment and some recreational programming and that kind of thing. The other, the bunkhouse and the Board of Elections, which were your lowest ranks on the priority, were just bumped out to make the funding work. So we were able to fund everything in your prioritization with the lower priority items being pushed out further into the future. So that was the strategy.
The E911 expansion, I remember having discussions of that, were 700,000. That would be coming probably from the 911 funds?
Yes.
Did I get that backwards? It wasn't for the radios, I'm sorry.
It was 700, that was from 911 funds, and in our funding strategy, we do reflect the 700.
I'm sorry, that E911 funding is not for the radios, I misspoke. That is for, that is 700 dedicated to that 1.7 million for that expansion.
So about a million dollars in something else. And what was discussed was bathrooms, break room.
It only saves us about less than $200,000. We went back and looked at the break rooms, we looked at the bathrooms, and it doesn't give you a significant savings off of that million dollars.
So what else are we doing in that room that we might do later on that's going to, because we're looking to hopefully eventually, we're talking about moving eventually from that place, is that going to get us through 10 years for a million dollars?
Well, right now...
That will get you through about seven years is our, five to seven years is our projection. And that's, the last renovation we did, that's about how long you were able to stretch it. The board did not rank the emergency services complex, so it's nowhere in the structure plan right now.
What was the cost of that emergency service complex?
13 or 14 million, I believe.
13 or 14 million, depending upon when you put it in the plan because of inflationary factors and so forth. But again, that complex received no gods, if you will. So right now, as you mentioned, it's nowhere in the plan. I imagine that will be revisited when we go back through next year and the year after, and looking at the next years out based on renovations.
And I'm assuming that the $8 million you were talking about in fund balance, that we're going, we have either going to spend or have it dedicated somewhere else, and we're going to use 5 million for projects roughly. That's taking us down to 20%?
Yes, that's taking us real close to the 20% number.
Because, you know, we're talking about a few weeks ago, 11, now we're down to 8.
I couldn't follow that. That's why I did this, because I was having trouble following you on that. So this, this is, I sat down, put pencil and paper with my staff, so this is actually where we think we're going to be, give or take, of course, because this is still an unknown number because we haven't finished the year, this is an unknown number because you don't know what the budget's going to be. This also doesn't take into account encumbrance carries as well as changes in other liabilities and so forth. So, you know, to run that down to zero would leave us no margin for estimate at this point.
Well, and as Jeff indicated, we, part of as we're going through the budget, we have eliminated those contingencies because we're funding for emergencies that may not occur. And so we said fund balance is a better place to fund those from versus actually budgeting some of those contingencies that we have in the past.
And like last year, I think Commissioner Lance said before he left, he said something about, you know, we were looking, we didn't spend any of the fund balance that we planned to spend last year. So we've got that, and then we've got additional revenue.
Right, that's taken into account on line five, I'm sorry, line four. So this takes into account actual revenue against actual expenditures. So once you get to actual, your budgeted fund balance isn't really, at the part of the discussion, it's just actual revenue against actual expenditures. So what this number and that number in 2018, if all budget was 100% and 100% revenue, we 100% expended, this number would actually be like a negative five or six million. So we have closed that gap, and we'll look at that a little bit tonight, a little bit later. But, you know, with a little bit of contingency, this number could be a little bit more or a little bit less, just depends on the one top items, because again, one of our strategies to help close the budget gap is to pull one-time items out of 2019's budget and pull them into 2018. So purchasing, for instance, maybe the SRO cars by the this year versus next, or carry that money between the years. So it helps reduce the current revenue needed next year for one-time items. So we're doing all we can to try to close that gap, but that leaves us the space needed to do that. If we were to zap that down to zero, we wouldn't have enough space to do that.
Were you predicting last year that we would be spent down to around the 20%?
No.
What was your thinking when we were going to set that to last year?
Well, we didn't, we didn't do this calculation last year, so I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
So Jeff, did you go to that last, I believe your last slide again? Yeah. I'm a little confused. You're talking about funding this proposed 2019 with no additional debt, no additional borrowing, correct?
Yes.
And is that with the one cent cut, the one and a half cent cut?
We've done both.
Or both?
We've done both. We have, as part of our funding strategy, we heard the board tell us find one and a half cents. So as part of our balancing act that we're doing with operations, is we've taken one and a half out of the tax rate, and we've set that aside and said that is no longer funding available to us. Then we have added a penny to go into funding your capital improvement. So at that point in time, for option A, you're at a two and a half cents, option B, you're at two cents.
Right, and that's the operating impact, as well as the debt savings, which traditionally is falling to the operating side, which is a little bit more to pay-go. So we kind of did both. We gave you the tax rate reduction as well as a capital funding plan. And go ahead.
I'll simply state my opinion. I think you've done a great job trying to bring all these projects. I think that's what we talked about on 26, is we have a lot of needs, and we need to quit grappling and move forward on meeting some of these needs for our services and our departments that work every day. Two things, I don't want to get back into auctioneer business again today. I'm not interested in borrowing any of this money. No offense, Commissioner Rushen. And I don't want us to get into that situation where we're coming up through three-plus million dollars short and not being able to balance and having to cut. I don't want us to get into that bidding war like we've done sometimes in the past where we're trying to draw small straws out of the glass to balance. So that's sort of my opinion, Commissioner Rushen.
And I think I understand what you're saying, but he said we're going to borrow $10,000, or $10 million.
Right, currently in the funding plan, and not in 2019, but in 2020 to make, to be able to build the sheriff's facility, there is a type, some form of debt. We don't have, I don't have a recommendation on the type of debt yet, to build the sheriff's facility, and that's 10 billion.
Okay, maybe I misspoke. But you're saying we're able to absorb that in the three-plus we've already issued? And that's the question I have, is can, how do we, how do we, do we add another penny that you're saying that we're going to set aside? Do we put that to the 3.9 and make it 4.9? And are we going, how do you mix the voter-approved bond with non-voter-approved bond? How do we hide that in there, I guess?
Well, because the fact that we are not, with what we've borrowed to date, you are not paying the debt service at the level that we originally calculated. That's part, so part of it is savings that we're realizing.
But shouldn't we lower that number instead and go with our accounting, like we were doing everything else we've borrowed for the county before?
Well, we, that's part of your funding strategy.
We're going to three pennies, I'll say for a second.
When you see your debt serving savings, we have assumed over, not the most recent debt, but these, this is a savings that we're realizing based upon all the changes we've made over really the last six years as it relates to getting rid of some of our more, I would say questionable debt structure that we had, as well as, you know, we have refinanced and we've done a lot of things to put ourselves in a much better position financially as it relates to our debt position.
Right, and I think that the question would be, shouldn't we reflect that in the rate, not the, not use that money to do something else?
Well, this debt savings, Commissioners, if you go back, I don't think Commissioner Rushen, you were on the board at this point, would you? It's been a while. So you remember we did the 10-cent tax increase? I'm sure you can remember that. Remember we calculated how much we had borrowed over time that wasn't added to the tax rate, and you added that to the schools for capital? This savings that you're getting here is from that debt. So if you had added tax rate when you added that debt, historically, this would have been the annual trail down of that debt over time. But you've already taken that tax, that tax rate and put it to the schools. So this historically has been savings that is accrued to operations in the general fund. So this is the schools' debt payoff as well as the Ag Center, some radio project, and the courthouse. But the schools primarily. So historically, we've been able to recoup that savings. So what we're suggesting is, instead of recouping that savings to operations and accruing that to operations, is to commit that to capital. So it's not part of the 3.09 voter-approved bucket. It goes way back to the 2000s, and it's what you approved that tax rate attached to originally, which you could have raised out, but you moved that all into the schools funding. So this is what the general fund side of that equation.
So the tax rate increase from then would be helping fund things, the savings off the bond, or the debt that was...
It's the debt related to that. That original debt service was taken out of operations, so historically, we're returning that back to operations from where it came out of, but now we're proposing, instead of accruing that back to operations, accruing that back to capital instead.
So the two questions we have before you is, go back one, sorry, is whether or not the, the structure that we presented to you is acceptable. And I heard you talk about taking out any additional debt, which means if we were to take that out, we would have to do some more manipulation as to where the projects necessarily fell in the timeline. The second question is the option A or option B, which is the one and a half cent tax reduction and one cent going to your initial capital program, which is two and a half cents out of your operational budget. Or option B, which is one cent tax reduction and one cent going to your capital program, which takes two cents out of your operational. I think those are the questions that we have before you.
Can I ask one more question concerning that? Of this capital, your plan, including the $10 million that Jerry doesn't agree with, and I have no problem with that. But how many, are you talking about doing, all of them? And then secondly, my question is why the $10 million is targeted at Sheriff's Office and not one of the other programs?
So, okay, let me answer in two parts.
Okay.
The first answer is yes, this is everything that the Board prioritized. So if it got a dot, it's in the plan. The second question is the reason why the debt is targeted to the Sheriff's Facility is, goes back to the, how we borrow it, whenever we get to the point of borrowing it, the access to the market for public safety facility is better than for other types of facilities that the market would perceive as non-essential. So what the market would say to us is you're not going to evict the sheriff for non-payment of your debt, but if you had another facility that wasn't an essential operation, then you, as a board, and I'm not suggesting we would ever do this, I'm just saying how the market would perceive it, then you have the possibility then that you could say, you know, we don't, we want to just pull everybody out of the library, we're going to have that library and go into the craters. So in the finance world, a project like a Sheriff's Office gets a lot more stick and a lot more interest and a lower interest rate possibly than when you're dealing with what they would consider a non-essential function. So what we would try to do is if we borrow, it should be toward a public safety facility versus a community services facility or one of those.
And when you look at the projects, I mean, that is the largest project we have out there. All of the other ones are either the Southwest Regional Library, the SBC have already been addressed through the GEO bonds that were issued a couple of years ago.
All right, go ahead.
Looking at the time, I think we have some more discussions. I'm not, I'm not opposed to what you've got up here, other than I've got a concern about the Board of Elections with the information already data. And, you know, just like, would maybe like to have a better discussion of this before we vote on, if we could have more time, and we're running out of time.
I'm probably going to be asking for a special meeting then because I've got to do a budget.
Well, and I'm in agreement with both you gentlemen, I mean, I think you both have excellent points. I'm not ready to vote on it today. My, also, my concern is if you don't agree with Jerry about the borrowing of money, if you're not going to borrow the money, I don't think the Sheriff's Department should be the one taking the hit, because that's public safety, that's, and that's a concern I have.
Your total, for instance, in these other areas, if, let's say you decided then to fund the 4-H Pavilion with that, you still have to go with 6.1 million to the Sheriff's Office. The challenge is in that second year, it's the biggest thing in the bucket. So to gather up enough money otherwise to fund that, you would have to start dropping projects or pushing projects way out to be able to fund that with cash. In fact, I'll tell you, if you were to plant that 10 million with real cash and not debt, you would lose 10 million, you would lose 10 million of your program. So you wouldn't be able to do all the projects you have here, that's what it amounts to.
I think I understand where you're going with that. I understand the borrowing on a house versus borrowing on a car, that's kind of what we're looking at. But I understand where you're going with it, I just want more time to maybe discuss it.
If you discuss further, it will need to be soon, because I, without some of those questions answered, I can't balance a budget.
So we have consensus to plan for another special meeting, tie it to loose ends? Yep. All right, thank you for your time, and we will recess the special meeting and reconvene at...
A minute, yes.
Should we adjourn this meeting? Just for the close session, is that what you're asking? I think this made it all. The Board of Elections meeting in order to close session at any time during your 7 o'clock meeting.
Okay, good, that's what we'll do, Will. I'll move that we adjourn this special meeting, all right?